Good evening. Can I have your attention? Everybody finding a seat? Thank you. Thank you, and thanks for coming to Livingston Elementary School. Building was built in 1977. I want to thank the Board, Board President and Vice President, and the Board members for being here tonight along with Superintendent Whitney. We have a few presenters tonight. Joe Clark will be facilitating the meeting. Again, I want to thank all of the community builders and for all the work you've put into this and the work you'll be doing in the future, and I want to thank you for that also. Very important meeting tonight, and I appreciate everybody's attendance. So with that, Joe?
Okay, thank you Randy. We're going to break this into two parts. First part is kind of a presentation. Some information that we have to show you our work so far with the community builders and their efforts. And then from that, I'm going to ask Kim Marsh to come up from our Capital Projects Division and talk about the costs associated with a particular model that we have developed. And then we also have Trevor Carlson from Piper Jaffrey here to talk about what that would entail in terms of a referendum bond resolution costs and those kinds of things. Then we'll take a break. I think there's some food on the way. Randy shared with me there's some sandwiches coming. Take a break, and then we'll come back and have a discussion about anything that's been presented tonight so that the Board and the community builders can have input into the process. So with that, first off, just to overview, again, we've collected scores on every school. I think we're all familiar with that process where we walked each school. We evaluated the condition, the suitability, the technology readiness, and the site of that particular building. We looked at the capacity, calculated what the capacity of that building was, and we looked at then what the financial impact would be to bring that building back to a score of 90. We have tonight, based on a request from the Board, a portable space inventory and usage. I don't know how deep into discussion we'll get around that. It was primarily for your benefit so that you guys could know what we're doing with portables throughout the school district. The community input event data, I've printed that out. I've given that to the Board to look at. We've compiled all but a few hand-delivered surveys. We'll be getting that out in an electronic format to get up on the website and out to the community builders group probably tomorrow. I'd want to give the Board an opportunity to look at that. Even though we have more results, the initial data that we looked at regarding just the community input events without the website data, the trends pretty much hold true. The biggest issue, the biggest takeaway by a large margin is the community feels our schools are overcrowded. I want to talk a bit about the community builder process, then the financial reviews that I talked about Kim, and then kind of an implementation model and forecast planning and that sort of thing. So this is just a visual. You've seen this, of the master planning process. Again, looking at data presentations back on the 23rd and 24th. Here we are tonight, develop some draft bond recommendation and data package. Look at a bond resolution process either on the 27th or 25th, and then completing of that master planning process. So I want to echo what Randy said at the beginning. I just want to appreciate or express my appreciation for the work of the community builders group. They have put in tireless amounts of time and effort. I'm not sure that we all agree on where we're at yet, but I think the overall relationship is we continue to build a process around a couple of recommendations, one of which you will see in a few minutes, and then another which I'm sure will come up in the discussion as we go through this. They've examined all of the data that you've looked at. They've also examined the community input data. We had a long, lengthy meeting last time about grade configuration. We've looked at, again, these two options of a 2x2, 2 elementary, 2 middle school; 3x1, 3 elementary, 1 middle school. And we have a recommendation around that that I'll share with you in a moment. I want to make sure everybody, again, we review this information, and this will be germane to what Trevor brings forward in a little bit. About $5.6 million in assessed value district-wide, $280,000 in debt capacity, of which $136,000 is being used, leaving us $144,000. And that really was... Did I say a thousand again? Million, sorry. You reminded me the last time, right? Schools only cost $150,000. We were going to build a lot of them. So $144 million, excuse me. And so that really was the focus of effort in the community builders group is what could we do with that money to bring about a change in overcrowding in the school district? Based on our analysis, MGT's analysis along with some input from the community builders, we look at a $455 million need. So that includes $120 million in restoring all buildings to a score of 90 or better, $235 million, $80 million for a high school, $40 million approximately for each of the middle schools, and then 25 for each of the elementary schools. $25 million for each of the elementary schools over the next 20 years. $235,000, $100 million in renovation and additions, for a total of $455 million. I think as we get into this tonight, we may find that there is more need than even that. And we need to be aware of that and discuss that. So I want to take some time and walk you through this. This is a new piece of information, and I just want to start with this fact. At our last community board meeting, builders meeting, we kind of, I held a straw poll of the folks that were in attendance and asked how many would favor a 2x2 over a 3x1 model? 2 middle, 2 elementary versus 3 elementary, 1 middle. And by my count, the consensus was 2x2. But I do want to say, there's still reservations in this group about 2x2. And that's the purpose of tonight, is to have that discussion. Let these folks share their opinions and information with you. That's what you asked us to do, form this group, and let them help shape the vision of the district. So we're going to give them that opportunity. But in preparing Kim and Trevor, we had to land on something. We had to give them some information so they could bring back some data for us. And this is the model that we kind of landed on. That if possible, would there be 2 middle schools in the first couple years? 2 elementaries in the next few years, taking us out to 5 years? Possibly an innovative high school, again, an innovative high school being a Delta-like high school? A planning period of 2 years. Then in the next, oh, years 11 through 20, 3 more elementaries, a middle school, possibly a high school, possibly another innovative high school. So this was kind of the 20-year model. And as you guys ask us to come in and provide you a long view of the horizon, this equates to about 10 schools over a 20-year period, including state match, $300 million. So this model is what we've been discussing with our community builders group. And as you can imagine, there are some that really can understand the benefits of this, but there are some that have some good points to bring up about why it may be better to do this one first and then this one. I'm not sure there's a lot of opinion that this isn't 3x1, 2x2 isn't the right model, maybe in a different sequence. But I feel like tonight they're going to give you their opinions about that, and we want to listen to that and hear them out. But to that end, I want to bring up Kim Marsh and let him talk about the costs associated with this. And the first thing I want to draw your attention to is that our schedule of loading 2 middle schools first and then 2 elementaries is different than Kim's. And the reason why, we gave Kim that information and he said, "I think financially, this will be better for us." So he's bringing this model because he thinks this maximizes our eligibility, our match. Already design efforts underway, all of those things. So I'm going to let Kim speak to that. Watch out for that.
I'm not very good at using this.
You need to.
Is everybody here?
No.
Is it kind of off? No, okay, this better. Thank you. Okay, I want to start out tonight with, right out of the gate, with an apology. I just learned later, later this afternoon, that the Curry Elementary classrooms really wasn't something that was being considered by the community builders. But I put it down here. I didn't want to take it off. So do with it as you wish. It's there. Enough said about it. And the second thing is, Joe's correct. There's some financial advantages to proceeding with the schedule as you see presented. With Elementary 16 coming off being built first. Right now, it's on the launch pad. It's ready to go. It's ready to go if a bond would pass in November. In July of 2018, we'd see it being constructed. What's the ramifications of putting it on a different schedule? There's some deform, and that's what we need to follow with OSPI for funding. Deform ramifications. If we don't continue with that deform schedule through November, we have to start all over. We have to go back to the queue. And remember, we've already spent a considerable amount of money designing it, looking at the site, and being prepared to build it. If anybody has any questions as I go through, sometimes I go a little bit fast. Just say, "Whoa, stop." So with that being said, I just want to briefly go through each one of the projects as they stand today with the knowledge that we have today. ES 16 is the furthest advanced as far as knowledge and information that we have. We've been designing it. We had it ready to go in February. And like I say, it's sitting there and it's all pretty much ready to go. It's 72,000... Go ahead.
When you say ready to go, it's shut, right?
It... We would have to do a little bit of design work yet because there's some code changes that have happened between February and they changed in July. So we'd have to go back and revisit that. We'd have to go back, or we'd have to go forward with our review with the city and the jurisdictions of jurisdiction to be prepared. But at the fund release, state fund release is scheduled for July of 2018. We would be ready to turn dirt in August with an opening a year later. So right now, it's 72,865 square feet. It's in the likeness of Curry Elementary. There is one difference. We added kindergarten rooms. Curry does not have kindergarten rooms. That expanded the size of the building somewhat. It's located on 20 acres just north of Chihuahua in what I call the old DNR properties. We estimate the cost being $28.6 million total. $28.6 million total turnkey. If you've been following these numbers, you'll know that in February of this year, it was 28.8. Through the process of destructibility, value engineering, and knowing some things that we know now that we didn't know then, we were able to mitigate escalation costs and actually realize a gain of $200,000. We originally, for example, scheduled to build that building on 25 acres. Through the process, we found out because of some streets that needed to go in, we were going to have 5 acres locked off until that 25. So we're only going to develop the 20. Another thing we learned is that now we have neighbors. There's other participants in that area that are going to share in some of the road building, for example, and utility costs. In February, we're going to do it all. So we gained a little bit there. Elementary 17 is a design yet to be determined. What we do know about it is that it's approximately 72,000 square feet. And we use that number so that we can come up with some costs. We know that it's on a site yet to be determined. And we know that we have estimated the cost at $29.7 million. That's approximately $1.3 million more? If I got my math right?
$1.1.
$1.1, thank you. So what that $1.1 represents is escalation costs. Escalation costs are running about 4/10 of 1% right now. 4/10 of 1% a month. This building would be funded in 2019 and would open a year later. A little bit about Stevens. $92,000 square feet, fully matched. Fully matched, New and Lou, the mistake. It'll be built on existing Stevens site while the existing school is in operation. The design, of course, is yet to be determined. We have a picture out there. We created a picture a year ago or whatever it was so people could at least have a little bit of the flavor of a building on a site that's being operated. It's estimated at $41.2 million. And because it's being built on a site where students are attending school, it's going to be, we have to put a little bit more contingency money in that. It's going to be a little bit more involved in constructing that building there while kids are on that site. In terms of where they're going to lay down the material, they may have to take it somewhere else. And some other similar costs. The new boy on the block, middle school number 4. Again, it's a design yet to be determined. The cost is based on a building of 115,000 square feet. We needed to start somewhere, and that's what we picked. It's on a site, again, somewhere to be determined. Cost is estimated at $47.7 million at the 115,000 square feet. Those are total costs. Each one of these cost estimates that I've given you are the results of teamwork. They're not just mine. Elementary 16, in fact, has 3 cost estimates all the way through design. Elementary 17 doesn't have one yet, an independent cost estimate, but it's an escalation off of 16's square foot cost. The elementary schools are fairly easy for us to determine because we have experience in the last bond, 2013, building elementary schools. We have some very detailed data on those. Stevens Middle School, we have 2 independent estimates. And the middle, and the middle school number 4, won at this point. Middle school 4 is probably the furthest one out at the 20,000-foot level. And in fact, 17, Stevens, and the middle school are at a higher altitude of information than 16 is. One thing that, one other thing that I want to mention that's changed from February 2017 until today is that our state match eligibility has decreased.
Decreased?
Decreased. In February, we were at 100, these are estimated at approximately at 146,172 square feet eligibility. We've dropped to 134,000, approximately 134,100. That represents, in state match dollars, $4.7 million.
Is that, is that because they changed the calculation or did we...
In October, it's all based on October 1 counts. So on October 1, 2016, we continued to grow. The district continued to add students, but not at the rate of previous years. And taking a cohort projection of that all 6 years, it drops off because all this is funded 6 years out. That's not to say, excuse me, that an October 1 count of this year would not be greater than last year and that eligibility might climb again.
Can I ask one question before you go on? Looking at Elementary School 16, 17, and the middle school number 4, if you add that state match money up, you're at $26-ish million for those 3 schools. If we were to only build a middle school 4 or only build elementary, if we were to build 2 of the 3 schools there, would we still receive $26 million? Is it just evenly spread between the schools? Or is there a restriction there that 8.6 is about the max?
What we did is I, we went back and we dispersed that eligibility all in various ways. There was one scenario where we added all eligibility into the 2 elementary schools and nothing on the middle school. There was another scenario where we added everything to the middle school, nothing on the elementary schools. All those scenarios came out at roughly within $100,000, the same as shown here.
So I think, I hear you saying we have $26 million of match, which equates to 134,000 square feet. And whether we build 2 elementaries, 1 elementary and 1 middle school, 2 elementaries and a 3rd middle school, we're going to get the same match?
Correct. You can apply it to whatever project you want. You don't have to use all of it if you don't want to. So the last thing that I want to mention is that, you know, we understand the perception of the $100 million barrier, the perception of that. We understand, we understand the perception of the $100 million barrier. And you need to know that we're still at the 20,000-foot level. You can see what we were able to do with 16. So it is our intention to go back, pull all that data together, and look at potentially any of the areas that we think there may be dollars available to lower that. So we're not quite done yet.
I just had a question before you got too far. He asked about the $26 million. And you said that it didn't have to all be used. What effect will not using all of that have? Do you lose it? Is it there for further years? Or, I just didn't understand that side of that.
You bank it. It'll be in the bank for future projects. What happens is, for the projects that you have on the list to do now, the more cost is on the local dollar. There's no free meal. It's either on the local dollar or use the eligibility.
And the reason I asked that question, Don, is I was just looking at percentage match on this bond versus what we were trying to pass before, and it's significantly lower. The state match portion, the local percentage is higher, but that's because it looks like we're exceeding our state match, and I just wanted to understand that.
Thank you. If there's any questions, I'm right over here. I'll be here after the meeting, so... Any other questions? Sorry, any other questions for Kim? So this 2x2 model, $45.45 million in match, $104.3 million in local dollars, for a total of $149.8 in project total. Any other questions?
I had a quick comment.
Go ahead.
I had a quick comment about the decrease in match. I think one reason for that could be that there's a fairly significant population in our school district that actually leaves the country in the winter. I know many of these people. And I think that that number this year was significantly higher based on our extremely bad winters. So when we're looking at data at this point, it's going to be significantly worse than in previous years. Although when we reanalyze the data in October, I don't think it's going to be quite as different.
Okay, great. Amy?
I want to know if in all of this process, you ever addressed the issue of sizes of our elementary schools and our middle schools? Because right now, it looks like we're still building massive schools. Was that addressed, and do we have an opinion on the community in that? Does this reflect that?
Right. Did we discuss it? Yes. We discussed it in the same terms that I discussed it at the board meetings. And that elementary schools typically 500 to 700 students. Middle schools 900 to 1100 students, 900 to 1100. And high schools 15 to 1800. We did project our school usage at the higher end of that range to maximize capacity so that we could reduce the overcrowding to the greatest extent possible. Meaning that we're trying to get 700 kids into every one of these elementary schools if we can.
Well, right now, it said that, from what I understood, Elementary 16 was being built for larger than Curry. And Curry currently has 800-plus kids in it. That's above the 500 to 700 of an ideal elementary school.
Right. I don't, Kim, correct me if I'm wrong here, but 700 kids in Elementary 16? Yeah, I think the floor plan is built for 700 kids. Okay. There is 808 in Curry, but we didn't build it to that number. We built it to 700. Same thing with 17. And 1100 on MS 4, middle school 4. I think a little less than that with Stevens because of the site size and already of the design work that had gone on there.
And that's the other thing, right now, if we can fit within that 900 to 1100 in each of our middle schools with current numbers, so is the plan with this 2x2 model to move 6th grade back to the middle school?
It is. It is. But I want to just clarify something you just said. If this were to be the recommendation, and folks were going to go forward with this, it does not create complete capacity for the middle school 10 years from now. Right? Initially, it might, but you may still have some portables at middle schools because of the rate of growth.
Well, which is why it looks like, you know, we have 10 years before we have another middle school planned already.
Yeah, yeah, no, absolutely, absolutely. Nathan?
Nathan?
I have a question. This percentage of state match is roughly 30% of the total project cost? I, I, I did the math. So it's roughly 30%. What is our historical experience on project state match cost?
Typically, typically by project to project, a full state match on a project gets you 50%. Okay, so if there was eligibility to match each one of these, roughly be a 50-50 division in the cost.
Okay, that.
That answer?
I'm, I'm a little confused with that because of the past ones I've looked at. It seems like when you put into elementary schools, you also need stuff beyond just the building which the state doesn't match, which is figured in our figures. And it seems like roughly when you figure all of that in, the state match is usually around 40 to 43%. Is that wrong? That's what I remember. If I can be incorrect.
You know, it varies from project to project. On the average, you know, it'll be like 51, 49. All depends on, you know, how many, how much discretionary spending you do in, in the building. And you're correct, the state doesn't match everything. They do not match everything at.
That's charity.
Yeah. You know, architects and engineers are not matched at the 84% rate. The only thing that's matched at the highest match rate is construction costs.
I, I think the answer, though, to your question would be that if we were, if we weren't over exceeding our match capacity, we would be around 50% or 45%. But what's happening here is we're, we're fully footing the bill for either two elementary schools or one middle school in round numbers. And so our overall percentage goes down. We could, we could have put the 26 million dollars on the two elementary schools and said that they each get 13 million here. Or we could have put it all on the middle school and said that it gets 23 million.
The data, the data that we have on the last three elementaries, we did McClintock, Curry, and Franklin, those were all fully matched. Those came back at roughly, roughly, you know, 51, 49 ratio for match. In the February bond, we didn't have that full match either. That's why it was 45 to whatever it was. And that's been dropped further, so.
Joe, can you explain your rationale for the, the order that you plan to build the two-by-two in?
My order, my rationale for my, I'm going to just pull that slide back up. If these were to land first, right, then you could move the sixth grade. Then these would be second. And then you would redistrict, right? And, and unfortunately, because there's some great financial reasons to do Kim's way, this may not be how we do it, but we would still, I believe, want to wait until those schools are online to redistrict. Go ahead.
But if you build an elementary school first, how would it affect the district?
Elementary schools, right?
If we build elementary sixteen first, we're going to have to move kids out of Livingston, out of Duane, maybe Chess, maybe Frost, maybe Emerson. Yes, we're going to have to rezone some schools. We'll try to minimize.
I'm just trying to wrap my head around it.
No, yeah, great question, great question.
I don't get building that elementary school first because it sounds like more shuffling to me.
Yeah. I, here's the risk, my shadow's here to correct me if I'm wrong. Here's the risk. Sixteen is on the launch pad, like Kim said. If we back off of that, we spent a lot of money in design, not that we lose all of it, but what we really lose is our role in the deform process. We have to start that over.
Building elementary sixteen first doesn't change the timeline on the middle schools either. They are what they are.
They would be still three years out.
They would still be on, that's good. They don't advance. Not building sixteen doesn't push the other ones up.
That's good to know. Thank you.
Can you explain why that is?
They're all dependent upon a deformed process. And that's set in, that is determined on a, on a regular schedule by the state. We just can't advance.
But would you build three schools at the same time?
We, we did that already, left in 2016.
Wait, you could build an elementary and two middle schools at the same time?
No, not in this scenario.
Well, that's why I wanted you to explain something.
All right, you're building sixteen here. You're building sixteen here to open here. You're building seventeen, seventeen, Stevens New and Lou, and middle school four here to open here, here, and here. Okay? This is the point now where we would be moving sixth grade back, redistricting, reboundering, and changing. That would have the most impact. To your point, though, we're going to probably have to do some of that here when we open the new school as well.
Okay. It's not possible to leave one year.
That's correct, that's correct. And if you didn't hear that, it pushes out the middle schools one year from what we discussed in our community builders. That's not because of sixteen. No, it's not because of sixteen. This is because they haven't been designed yet. This is because they're not in the deform process. Now, we could delay this, you know, if you wanted to. I don't, I don't know that we should, but you could if you wanted to. Hold on, Courtney, you've got a mic in your hand. What did you want to talk about?
I'm concerned with the thought process that we're moving sixth graders back to the middle school.
Okay.
And I'm just wondering at what time we would talk about that or when the board would make that type of decision. I'm not in favor. I really like them at the elementary school. And I'm just wondering if I'm in the minority there because that has happened with my opinions before and I'm fine with that.
Okay. Yeah, just to recap, we did bring both the community builders and the board some research around grade configuration and that sort of thing. But regardless of the sixth grade migration, it wouldn't happen immediately. So the plan for that migration, the benefits of it, why it would go forward, I think we've got some time to work around that. Nathan?
So I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time, but Amy, you asked a question that goes back to one that I think I have for you guys as the board. And that is deciding what is more important, small schools or kids in brick and mortar? Because I don't think as a district, we have the financial resources to provide both. So I think there, we're going to have to make a trade-off decision. I don't know that it's our group's role to make that recommendation to you guys. I would hate for us to come to a conclusion and you guys say, well, our priority is small schools, not, not kids in brick and mortar. So that's where I look to you guys to provide us guidance of the ground rules. I, you know, I have some other, other, other questions and I'm not sure when the right time in the forum is. Okay?
So I, I mentioned to Nathan, let's let Trevor do the last piece of this, okay? And then let's just open it up and we can have a great discussion about whatever we want to talk about, okay? So Trevor, if you don't mind.
Can I respond to one comment about the sixth grade? I'm with you. Love my kids at the sixth grade. Love, love, love it. I, I don't know what's going to happen in 2021. I think we're ways away from that. And if our population grows, I think it's either way. As it sits, though, if we build two middle schools, that's, we need, we need the room right now in the elementary school. And that's probably where we'd go. But like I said, I don't think that's a decision. I think it's a direction that, yeah, you know, we need to make sure we build the school that'll accommodate sixth graders because that's probably, I mean, that's what it looks like it needs. But I, I think things could change. We might have enough kids that we don't need to do that. We might be in a position that we can actually put in a couple more middle schools at that point. So I love the sixth grade, those kids at sixth grade, too. I feel like it's the best place for my kids. So I agree. I think, I think that's a decision we can make later.
All right, thank you very much. My name is Trevor Carlson. I work for Piper Jeffrey. And my role is to help the district implement a bond sale plan. And what I want to talk about today is, you know, think about the schedule that was just up on the screen, how those different projects are layered in. We're going to do the same thing with the potential bond. And, okay, I'm back. First slide, I think there's some hard copies that have been floating around. Just a reminder, if you want to be on that November 7 ballot, the resolution filing deadline is August 1st. Okay. What I want to chat about today, project budget. We've heard from Kim about estimated cost of projects. What I want to do is look at the estimated revenues to help pay for those projects. We've talked about state match, some of that deformed discussion, the timing associated with that. That's a very important piece, that state match. Let's talk about that local share that will be requested from the electorate. Sorry, it's not flipping here, so I have to turn my back, sorry. Some of the assumptions that go into the plan, interest rates being one, very important. We'll talk about assessed value, bond rating, and then we'll talk about tax rates or millage rates. Just to get, just to get your mind around what's, what we've experienced in the recent past, this is a long-term trend of tax, definite downward trend in that graph, but moments of volatility. If we look at a one-year chart, right here was the election of our new president. Interest rates went very high very quickly. So we've talked about contingency in the plan. What I've built is using today's interest rates, if they're at 4%, I put 5% into the model because we have these swings and you're not going to lock in borrowing costs until you actually sell the bonds. Okay, so that's, that's some of the contingency we've built in. The school district has a very strong credit rating at AA3. This was affirmed in 2015, early in 2015, when the district refinanced a set of bonds that are on the books. This will drive the district's borrowing costs down. This is a very important piece, and I don't anticipate that changing in the future. Assessed value. I have a graph here going back to 1997. Couple of the key data points I want to highlight are compound annual growth rates, kind of in the middle of the left-hand section of the slide. On average, year-over-year growth over a 20-year time period, 7.5%. If we slice that into a 10-year, 6%. And over the last five years, 5%. Why is that? And more assessed value is going to drive the millage rate or tax rate and how the burden of additional debt is spread across district's taxpayers. The raw data I've included in your slide showing 2017 had an increase of 9%. 4% the year prior, 5% the year before that. Yes?
Can you talk a little bit or provide some insight as to what drives that growth in annual assessed value? Is that new development? Is that reassessed value, et cetera?
Great question. It's a, it's comprised of both. So new construction that comes on the rolls will broaden the dispersion of taxes. So think of, there's two taxpayers, a third enters, that same tax bill, that same tax burden will be distributed among more people. So individuals' tax bills would decrease in that very simplified scenario. But a vast majority of it is inflationary. But new construction is a very important piece of expanding that, that pie. Yes, Scott?
I was going to say, so going forward here, we'll, we'll allow you to go ahead and finish. If the board and the community can hold all their questions until the end, then we'll open it up for our district.
Sure, okay. That sounds great.
I don't know if it was last time I interrupted.
No worries.
But we'll, we'll set that as a, as a ground rule here.
Okay.
And I'm going to, I don't want people to think I'm taking off because I'm frustrated or anything with the process of a family commitment that I need to leave for about a half hour, about 10 minutes. And I'll turn it over to, to Ms. Phillips to run from the board side if there's any.
Perfect. And I want to get this information in your hands before you leave, so thank you, Scott.
No, I'll, I'll be back. I'm just going to leave a half hour.
Okay.
And I went through this, the board received this slideshow this afternoon, so thank you.
Oh, very good, good. So a lot of numbers on this chart. I apologize. This is, break out your reading glasses. This is the output from our bond sizing model that estimates tax rates. The top box has all of the assumptions that go into this plan. Number one, the district's strong credit rating. Number two, I mentioned earlier, today's interest rates plus a cushion of 1%. Assessed value growth. Remember, 2017, a strong year-over-year increase of 9%. An estimated 5% going forward in 2018 and 3% every year thereafter. 5% and 3% for example are lower than those compound annual growth rates for 20 years, 10 years, and five years. So I think we're being conservative on that front. Kim was very helpful in providing me a estimate, an estimate of the cash flow associated with that colored chart where the different projects come online. So what I've assumed at 104.3 million dollar bond ask, 18.5 million would be sold right away, 45 million in 2018, the balance of 40.8 in 2019, trying to match the district's cash flow expenditures with cash inflows from the bond. Ultimately, all of these numbers are the estimated principal and interest amounts for these individual bonds and those bond issues. The number in the far right-hand column is where I want you to focus. Today, the district has a bond tax rate of $2.25. Based upon all those parameters in the top box, I am estimating we would stay at a level tax rate out through the year 2032 at $2.94. You may ask the question, what does $2.94 mean? That's a difference over today's tax rate of 69 cents. So it's one way for individuals to be able to quantify what this means to their tax bill. That delta of 69 cents, let's just focus on 100,000. It's easy to do the math, we just move some decimals around. That would be an increase for someone that has a piece of property worth $100,000 of $69. That's the tax bill increase. That's our estimate. For a $200,000 piece of property, 69 times 2, 138. That is a one-time increase from 2017 to 2018. But going forward, I've tried to keep that tax rate level based upon the primary assumption of the assessed value growing at those figures. So the tax bill. Yes, for a $100,000 piece of property, yes. And thereafter, relatively stable. I guarantee you, I will be incorrect in my assessed value assumptions. But I'm trying to be conservative. Over the long run, what we see is that this number usually trails off. That's what I want. I want promises made, promises kept from the school board and staff. If we can have an estimate of 69 cents, I would love to be able to come back five years later and have this tax rate be something lower than 294. It's usually what happens. Great recessions and things of that nature throw these plans into chaos, for example.
But they haven't through the recession here in Pasco. We've always been lower than what has been estimated. So that's good to know. That that's where we're at.
Good point, good point. Debt capacity was brought up before. The static debt capacity number Joe spoke about in his first slide are 144 million, which is the figure right here. What I wanted to show with these figures is you're What I wanted to show with these figures is your assessed value is hopefully growing over time. 5% of that number is your statutory limit. We layer in bonds in the future, and let's say in 10 years, you wanted to go out for another bond. Hypothetically, you would have debt capacity of $272 million. Just want to get that in your thinking process, that there is capacity in the future. We know that this is, let's just call it phase one. At some point, if the kids keep coming at the cliff, that they keep coming into your district, and then enrollment grows as rapidly as it has, there will probably be a phase two. Oh, I just picked 2027, 272 million.
Sorry to interrupt. I know we're still told our questions, but is that assessed value following your projected?
Yes, yes. It is based upon 5% next year, 3% forever. So, from a graphical perspective, to simplify things a little bit, this is the district's projection for tax rates going forward based upon the debt that is on the books today. You're at this 225 level today. It's basically going to stay the same out through 2028. There's a small amount of principal due in 2029. So, what I'm doing with that, that eye chart that had all the different tax rates, all the debt service structures on it, is I'm trying to take this amount of debt that's on the books today and layering on the next phase to create a pattern that looks something like this. An increase maybe of around 69 cents from 2017 to 2018. The different colors are associated with the 2017, 18, 19 issue, all from a single authorization, creating a pattern that will hopefully provide tax stability going forward. That's the goal, and I hope that sums it up in basically one slide. I have a whole host of other items that I have in my back pocket that I do not want to flip through unless there are specific questions, because we've gone through some of this information in the past, but I wanted to be ready. Any questions, comments? Looks like we have some in the audience. But while the microphone is getting passed around.
We'll open it up for questions.
Okay, thank you.
So, quick benchmarking question, and I don't know if this has been done, but as we look at selling this to the community, sometimes people look across the rivers and compare. So, at 294, where does that put us in line with neighboring districts from a marketing perspective?
Did we, I think we took that out of the presentation. Yeah. Do you want me to load that up? So, for example, Pasco has a bond tax rate of 225. The maintenance and operation levy in 2017 is 427, so that's a total of 652. Kennewick is at 502 total. Richland, 499.
Trevor, does that include this most recent bond that Richland passed? Do you know?
This is for 2017, so they've been selling debt on a periodic basis similar to what we have put up here. So, they sold bonds recently, those will hit the tax rolls in 2018. So, this is a static 2017 tax rate.
And I think we need to understand that there's a reason for that, and it's a reason that Pasco struggles to get over because we don't have Hanford, we don't have the retail, we don't have the industrial, we don't have the tax base that these other two cities have. Something we've been putting pressure on in Olympia to change because it's not right.
Thank you.
Really, schools should be fair and equitable across the state, and it's obviously not here, but it's nothing we can do about it. It's going to be higher.
In terms of benchmarking, is there a way to take, say, the total on $100,000 and divide it by the assessed value to be able to better compare Pasco's to Kennewick and Richland's? Would that be a better comparison that would take into account that difference in assessed value?
The numbers that I read off take that into account. So, your assessed value is about, Howard, I need that sheet again, thank you. Right now, 5.6 billion. Kennewick's 7.3, 7.4 if you round up. Richland, 7.1. So, the tax rates of yours at 652, Kennewick's at 502, Richland's at 499, take that into consideration. It could be, yeah, sorry, sorry.
So, what I said was, I think the district's total debt load as a percentage of assessed value might be a better benchmark because they have higher assessed values than we do.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. But what decisions are you going to make with that information? Right, we have a cost of 104 and change, right, based on architects and good folks like Kim. And so, we're talking about specific needs for Pasco versus specific needs and debt loads that Kennewick and Richland have approved. So, a little bit of apples and oranges. Thank you.
I think that kind of benchmark comparison would help us understand the palatability of a 69 cent increase.
And I can provide that data. Perfect. Any questions from the board?
I would like to know if in those bond calculations, it included things like the transportation needs, we have some of the roofing that we need at some various schools, and the safety issues that we have at some other schools.
Only takes you to recall what you saw there, the schools, none of, no other.
So, that would be even more money. That was quite a bit more than the calculations last fall that we included two middle schools and two elementaries. It was right around 98 million. Is that because the state match has changed or because some of the prices of these schools have increased?
Both. Prices have escalated, of course, and state match has dropped off. And I think the other projects, just as I recall, were like around 12 million, million or, and none of that's included in here. There may be other ways of getting some of that, but, you know, those are all what-ifs.
Question from Kim. Of those project scenarios that you laid out, which ones are already in line for state match via the de-form process?
The I-16 and the Currie classrooms are in the queue right now, so if we don't pass them on, we lose our place in line for those funds. We're at the D5 level, and D5 level requires by November 15th, a certified letter from the superintendent saying that there are funds available for those projects. So, correct. They're dependent upon a bond being run in November and a bond passing in November. Otherwise, we start over with those. And I think Mr. Marsh told me today, so the day after the bond passes, we'll be sending a letter.
Yeah, do you? Let me, Donnie, can you?
So, it doesn't matter what is in the queue right now as far as what's on the queue for spending the money, because you said that it was on for the bond, the previous bond, basically.
So, I think what you're saying is Elementary 16, Currie classrooms, were on the previous bond, so that's why they're at the D5 process. These, the 17 and the.
We have 17. We don't have Currie, we have 17 to get the money.
No, because we'll need to start, that was Kim's schedule, that's why that's moved out. We have to start the design process, the D3, de-form process for 17, then the middle schools to get that, got it? Okay? And that's why they're a year later. All right.
So, I think one of the things to keep in mind is the rules on the other side of the state coming out of Olympia change regularly, and one of the things that we're looking at modifying is their school construction assistance program, which includes the match money. And they could, they're talking about, this last legislative session, they were talking about including portables in your facility count. And of course, that would really hurt us if we have to count portable. So, one of the keys to, or one of the things to consider in this next bond is passing these or taking advantage of the things that we already have in the queue. So, that's why I think Elementary 16 is important. The rules could change if we drop out of the queue.
From what I understand too, Steve, is that they're likely to change. They're really looking to redo these match funds because Olympia is short on funds, and this is one way they can regain funds. And from what I understand, everything they've put forth so far hurts us, everything. So, it's, you know, so that's one reason it would be great to get a bond through this year. Is that true, is that not true?
So, one of the things that, so typically Olympia, these numbers are rough, but typically Olympia gets $200 million in match bonds that they have to match each year. This year, they got over a billion. So, that is a big jump. So, that makes me think that they're going to start looking at ways they can adjust those rules to not have to deal with that going forward. So, that's, I mean, it is Elementary 16, the Currie classrooms are in the de-form process. Stevens is a little bit different. Stevens is new in lieu as opposed to just adding space, so that de-form is probably a little bit different, probably not so much risk there. However, there was a big demand in money this year, so that is going to weigh in how they adjust things going forward, I believe. So, just some things to keep in mind as we're going through this process.
One question that I had was this de-form process, now that we have a 20-year plan, can we expedite some of these things by planning for some of these things ahead of time so when we do pass a bond, schools aren't three years out? We can pass a bond and they're going to be a year or two out?
Well, I think there's just a process of design, moving dirt, getting ready. Typically, an elementary school, I think Kim said about 14 months or something of that range. So, there's some compression that can happen because of the plan, but I don't know that we could accelerate it to that extent. Just because of the process it goes through to build a school, it would be hard to move it forward to that.
So, this is a typical process across the state? This is not.
I'm building two elementary schools in my district, and they're taking 14 months each. So, that's just the way that the money, and that's a lot of what Trevor's calculations are in terms of how he cash flows it, is those cycles. So, that's why we do that.
So, I want, just one comment on that, Joe. So, we were able to advance Elementary 16 this time because we spent money that we have to advance that. If we want to build money into a bond for A&E funds for a future school, we could do that, or if we have money in our general operating fund that we want to repurpose for that purpose, we can advance them in that way, but to, but that, I mean, that helped us this time to get ready so that we can, so that we're ready right out of the gate if we pass a bond to build that building. But that requires some advanced planning and funds available to do that advanced planning.
So, I just wanted to, and I apologize, I'm a little late with the answer to the question. Ms. Stinson asked a question about grade reconfiguration and looking at the survey data that was done, and I wanted to express my gratitude. There's a number of people in this room who did a lot of legwork to collect paper surveys, and I appreciate very much that community outreach because what was really important to us as a district is that this process have a lot of community voice. So, we had 400 respondents either from the community input events or online and/or paper surveys, and of those 400 respondents, 60% of them either strongly agreed or agreed with addressing grade configuration as a way to address overcrowding, and 71% agreed that the number-one priority or the number-one problem to tackle for us was overcrowding. So, I just wanted to provide that context to your question, Courtney.
All right, let's take a break. There's some sandwiches over here. It's 21 minutes or just shy of 20 till on the clock back there. Let's just do this quickly, grab a sandwich, you need to use the restroom, grab water, whatever you need to do, and try to be back in your seat in five minutes, and we'll keep going, okay? So, I want to shift gears a little bit with this portion of the program, and I'd like the opportunity for community builder members to be able to speak to the board about your thoughts around the process, what you think about two-by-two versus three-by-one, just an opportunity for you to speak. You know, the real effort around this meeting, the real goal and objective of this meeting was for you to have time with the board to communicate what you think should happen or what concerns you might have about what might happen. So, with that, do you want to start?
Good. I missed the last meeting, so I didn't get a chance to get in on that, but just the two-by-two, I sort of see that. Three-by-one, I've always said that when we moved the sixth graders back to elementary school, we didn't solve anything, we just moved the problem, that's all we done. So, whether it goes one way or the other, it's still creating another problem, and that's why we're needing all of these middle schools. So, from a standpoint of two-by-two, I can see that too. I would think that that would make more sense, because if you end up with 20 or 25 elementary schools, at some point, you're going to taper off too. So, and then you look at the surroundings around here with Kennewick having five middle schools, Richland with their numbers, and us still standing where we are. So, that would be my take on it.
Any thoughts about what Trevor shared about the rate, about $100 million threshold?
Me, I know a lot of people worry about the money as far as I was talking to Ashley earlier about it. Me, as somebody who grew up around here, I, that part don't scare me that much. And the reason why it don't scare me is because of our children, you know what I mean? Our value is our children. And I've always said I'm never going to be rich, but the richest aspect I have is like this little baby back there. That's the richest we got. Not only my kids, but everybody else's kids and grandkids in there got to be our values. So, that's the way I see it. One point of view, though.
I've been to all the meetings, and I, at the last meeting, I liked the two-by-two model. I understand the idea behind sticking with Elementary School 16 and the de-form process, I get all of that, but the data that we all sort of went through at the last meeting, it felt like the two-by-two made more sense. It solved a few more of our problems in a better way. I do have some concerns about running a bond of that size. I personally would vote for a bond of any size, really, but I do have concerns just about the community support and making sure that if that's what we decide to do, that we get the word out in a really organized way that addresses the concerns of all members of the community, not just, you know, some here and there. I enjoyed the process. I think that the community builders group, the process, has been really nice to get a lot of different input from different people with different perspectives and to be able to sit down and look at the numbers and bounce ideas. able to sit down and look at the numbers and bounce ideas. As far as the, the plan as it sits, I, I mean, like I said, I, I like this plan. I like any plan that shows that there's forward thinking and some sort of idea of the future, and not just trying to play catch-up for the next 10 or 20 years.
Was that something that was, is this on?
Yes.
Was that something that was discussed, was the size of the bond and the community support with that?
It was. We, we talked about where we thought it could be. Um, I, I don't know that we talked about it, certainly not as specific as Trevor presented it tonight. Um, but, and I think there's probably some folks, we haven't heard from everybody yet, but I think there's some folks that might be concerned about that, too. So, we're gonna let others.
So, I was with the Community Builders Committee, and it was a positive process, I would say, and we did discuss a, a lot of facets of, of all of this, and all the data that we got back from the Shurets Knights. Um, and we did, when we met last month, and we looked at, at the two proposals that we felt like matched what the community was asking for best, and as a group, uh, we decided as a majority that we felt like the two-by-two was the best option. There is no perfect option, and there never will be, but I feel like, especially after hearing the numbers changing tonight, that we don't have time to sit back and wait for a perfect solution, 'cause there isn't one, and the longer we wait, the more expensive this becomes. And so, we, we do need to go forward, and I think having this long-term plan is gonna carry a lot of weight with the community. And I think, even though it's a more expensive bond, if you're giving people something that they want, and something, a vision that they can hold on to, I think we're gonna have a lot more success. So I think this long-term plan where, where, you know, like I work at the high school, I would love a new high school. I know that's not gonna happen right now, but I can see the vision of, okay, we could fix the middle school, we could fix the elementary, and then in a couple years out, it will be time for the high school, and that all of these things can get addressed, and it's not, I get why, what I want, you don't, but that everybody will get what they need, it's just gonna take time. But when you can see it on a timeline and see that there is a plan, then I, I think that's gonna give the, the community a lot more confidence in, in their, in voting for a bond.
Thank you.
Okay, you guys know me, if you don't talk, I just pick on you. So, you get to talk next.
Um, so, anybody that's been at a meeting has heard me say this before, and it's not that the support isn't there for a two-by-two, or a three-by-one, or whatever. It's getting everybody to sing from the same sheet of music, and the last time we tried to run the bond, there was discourse among a whole bunch of different groups and a lack of support from some key areas in this community. And no matter what we put forth, if those groups don't come together, we're gonna face the exact same issue, and it is scary, because it costs a lot to put something like this out to vote. It's frustrating, because we want, I mean, everybody here wants to do what's right, I believe that 100%. But, with, um, small little side discussions, or a lack of unification, it's just, it's a very uphill battle. The tech, the debt capacity are asking, a community like Pasco, um, we're, we're overall a, a fairly poor community, and the tax burden really belongs to the homeowners. And, for me, it's not such a big deal, but I'm not, and I'm in a position where I'm lucky enough to where it's not a big deal, but there's a lot of people in our community that that is a big deal. And while $69 or whatever it was, doesn't seem like a lot, you know? For some families, that really is, and I think that's something that we have to bear in mind. And hopefully, we all are. That's, that's really where I'm gonna come from. And, there's been times where I've asked people to volunteer and be a part of this committee, and people just are not stepping up to the plate to help run bonds and levies. And that's really frustrating, you guys. Not speaking to anyone in particular, just as a whole. Thank you.
Um, I just wanna address some of the things that were talked about. I believe that our, our community is changing. I, I think that as more new houses are really being built, more new families are coming to the area that don't have the history that, um, or don't know the history of this area. And I think that they're more than willing to vote for something that will improve their new home. And so I think that when we talk about, about Pasco as a whole, we need to remember that they're, they're there too, they're new, but they're our, they're in their part of Pasco. I speak as somebody that's moved here almost nine years ago, and not knowing the history, um, when I first moved here, you know, I just assumed everyone would vote yes for a bond that happened to deal with the kids. I think that a lot of things too, needs, um, need to be talked about. If we are in agreement, then, um, we spread that excitement and that desire to, um, share that excitement with our friends and our neighbors. And I personally love having the sixth graders in elementary, but seeing that it would benefit our whole community to have the sixth graders move back, we were due to the two, two-and-two model, reluctantly made me agree to, to this, but I'm still excited about it, and I think that's what we need. We need that excitement, and it needs to be, you know, genuine, and, um, spread. So, um, like, and also, I do feel like that our community could get behind the bond.
Great. Thank you very much. And he's just like I was when I was that age, and a microphone was in front of me, and I wanted to talk to him.
Um, good afternoon, my name is Sergio, and, um, I'm in favor of the two-by-two by one, actually, uh, with the 10-year plan, and looking at the 20-year plan as well. It's not a perfect plan. It's not the perfect plan, and we're, we're not all gonna agree with it, but we gotta come together. That's the reason why this bond didn't pass. It was not a money issue, I can tell you that. It was that, it, there was no agreement in the community. And I don't think it was to address the problem with that bond. Uh, the other, the other thing that Joe kinda shared in the last, in the last meeting is that there's a potential...
Can you hold the microphone a little closer?
There's a potential for also, for a portable reduction, and I think all the families want that as well, or the community want that as well. That's one of them. The other problem that I saw in the bond is that the plan was not clear. There was no marketing whatsoever. And I think we need to be more direct, and also target the demographics, in order for them to understand. Because our demographics is such a wide range. So, that's my take on that.
Thank you, Sergio. So, I'm just gonna pick on a few more people.
Um, this, my name is Jamie Southworth. This has been a fast process. I know it needed to be a fast process, but I felt like we didn't have enough time. And I know we're kind of out of time. Um, we were out of time in February. We really needed that bond to pass, and for a lot of different reasons. I think the weather killed us. I just think there was a lot of things that came together to just, we just didn't get it done. There was marketing by the district. I don't agree with the people saying there was no marketing. I got lots of mailers, um, as part of the bond committee. We did, we did what we could do, but like Courtney said, there was like 10 of us, and that's probably being generous. So, there's only so much 10 people can do in a district with 17,000 kids. I look at the numbers, and it worries me a bit. Um, I think it's a lot. And like others have said, for my family, we won't feel it as tremendously, but I think there's families in Pasco that genuinely will feel stretched. It'll be too much. I think the elderly community, too. I don't think, you know, I think we think of, um, the low-income community more than we think of maybe the older, uh, community members. It also concerns me if we do this in November, and then we turn around and run a levy in February. We have to run a levy in February. And I think there's a lot of people that don't understand the difference between a bond and a levy. And so I think that makes it all hard sell, but, you know, we have to do something. And I understand we need the schools, and, um, I just, I don't know. I hope this is the answer. And I'll, you know, I'll stand behind whatever the board decides, and I'll support it, but, but I think it's a big ask. Heidi?
My name's Lance Eager. I've been through this a couple, three times, as some people know. So, as far as speaking to the board, here's how I look at it. You have ideal, what you wish for, and what's realistic. It's been said, you know, that, well, when you move the fifth grader or sixth grader down to the elementary, you know, that just caused a problem. We didn't do that, because we didn't know there wouldn't be a problem. That is not flat true, okay? Anybody that thinks that, it's not, we knew what we were doing. We recommended that to the board, the board did it, and there was a reason why. And that's because of reality. The reality at the time, we felt that you were not, that there was not a chance to pass a big enough bond to build a middle school. If so, I think that's what we would've recommended, and that's probably what would've happened. So this is, to, to go back in, in history, is not worth, uh, talking about. The two-by-two thing, I understand it, it's, it's ideal as to what it is, but, in reality, do we wanna give up what we already have planned, what we have already, uh, planned for, done, is in place, ready to go? So if you do do this plan, how are you gonna sell that, and then tell people, "Well, by the way, all that money we spent on that elementary, uh, well, we're gonna put that out for five years, or four years, or whatever it happens to be." So that's my concern. I think that, uh, you know, uh, like I say, this is as ideal as it can get, but reality is a fact that, you know, there's a lot of other factors in play. This, this state's probably gonna change some things too, that may change things in the future. So, um, my feeling is, it comes back around to, what can we realistically do? Last time around, you know, there was some confusion over, you know, what was in the bond. I would have to say that I'm guilty of not wanting to be part of the bond committee, even though I was on the, the planning of it. But, you know, going forward, we have to do what's best for the community. And the two-by-two plan may be best for the community in some ways, but not in others. So, my concern is, how are you gonna explain that we spent all this money getting ready to build an elementary school, but now we're gonna just wait to build a, a, uh, middle school, and redo middle schools? One other thing that concerned me a little bit, it has come to my ears, that, uh, the, the district has decided not to run a bond in November. Where, where that came from, I don't know, but I will say it has come to my ears.
So, I would say it's the, the board's decision to decide when the bond is run, and I don't, I haven't heard anything, I don't believe that any of us here have made a decision yet, but...
I don't know, I feel like we all talked about this at the end of February, and agreed that the ideal time was in November. That's what I remember. And I haven't heard anything, so I believe that's a rumor. So, but I really appreciate you bringing those forward, because, because we need to be able to clarify that.
And maybe you answered this earlier, and I just missed it. Okay, so, we have this Elementary 16 that's ready to go, but the two-by-two plan bumps the middle schools ahead. Is there a plan in which we can still run the two-by-two, but get that one elementary first, right? There was a plan for that. Okay, so we could still do the two-by-two, like, I, I don't know the gentleman in the red shirt, but he was saying he thought the two-by-two might be best, but he didn't wanna waste resources. So, we could still do the two-by-two, and just bump that one elementary ahead, so that we don't lose that, so it just bumps the plan out, right?
Yeah, I think what Kim was gonna say, and I'll let him talk himself in a moment, that the configuration of this two-by-two was the example that we used in our planning group. We've now got more information that it would be best to continue forward with Elementary 16 first, followed by then the other three schools that make up the two-by-two. So, if you wanna call it one-two-one, if you wanna call it two-by-two, you know, two-by-two for me means in the first 10 years, we're gonna build two elementaries and two middle schools. The sequence of those, I think, has been determined by Kim's work, to say, "Hey, this is more advantageous to do it this way." Kim, and would you agree?
That's comprehensible, thanks.
Okay, let's keep going forward. Any other comments from the audience in the Community Builders Group? Great.
And for, I, I would like to thank you for letting us know that this process worked well for you. That's one thing the board has been very diligently seeking, is ways to get input from the community that's, that the community feels heard and, and responded to. So I really appreciate all the comments, that you enjoyed this layout. If you didn't, I would like to hear those too, because we wanna make this process better for you, because it is extremely valuable for us. We have learned so much from you, and we appreciate it.
I'm Winnie, I teach sixth grade at Clinton. It's just easier for me to stand, because I think I'm used to standing all day. This has been fun. If the Community Builders was a TV show, I would totally DVR it. The one thing that I took away from this whole experience was that, even though me as a sixth grade teacher, I totally would love to stay at the elementary school, because I like being down there. I'm also a coach for the building, so I get to go K6 into every classroom at my school. I need to stop thinking about what I want, and think about what would have the greatest impact on all of the students. And although what I want, I think is the best plan, isn't necessarily what's going to be the best for all of Pasco. I do like the two-by-two plan. The only problem I worry about is the cost of it. It can be, it's like a sticker shock. Now, when, um, you had put out the cost, like, this is how much it'd be per year, that makes sense to me. So for the cost of Amazon Prime, I can send 17,000 kids to school. And for me, that seems like a better deal than what I'm currently paying for, for Amazon Prime. But I understand that, and I think that'll be the next thing. As a whole community, for Pasco, we're gonna have to figure out, how do we translate that to everyone to understand? Three dollars, like, whatever, three-ish dollars for, you know, per hundred thousand dollars, we could make a huge impact on how our students learn. It's not just about what I want, it's about what, it's going to help the most. Having the middle schools first, it, it does make sense, because then you'd move sixth grade back. My only fear would be that we would then pick our jobs again during Teacher Appreciation Week, which is really hard to appreciate, um, while you're trying to be appreciated. Uh, so I would really like for that to... So I would really like for that to never happen again. But I get it. And I know if you talk to other sixth-grade teachers, they would understand it, too. And there are still some of us left that remember that Friday, and we knew that we would probably be moved back. And that's okay. And I know, even from a standards viewpoint, they're built six, seven, eight. It's, I go down into nearly every classroom at my school, K-5, and it is, for me, a different world, because I've been so trained in a six, seven, eight. Not that I've said no, ever, to doing that. I've had to learn everything from now on. I think as a team, if we can say, "Yep, the two-by-two," understanding that the elementary 16 may have to come first, and then maybe it's Stevens. I don't think Stevens is something that you can just, "Well, sorry, we're going to build elementary or middle school four." You can wait. I feel like that's going to have to be the first thing you do. Then, of course, I have to bring up like the B-word of boundaries, because I think that'd be the next thing. But as a whole, if we could come together and say, "We are Pasco, not, this is what I want, my kids, me," then this is going to be a lot easier, less hair pulling. And if we can all decide, not saying right now, if we can all decide that from here on out, the things that we're going to post online, or tell our coworkers, our neighbors, our family, our friends, is going to be, "This is for all of Pasco," I think that'd just be a huge attitude change, too.
Well, well said, well said. Nathan?
Is it my turn now? Good evening. My name's Nathan Graham, I think you all know me. I'm going to be a voice of dissent. Amy, you thanked us for this process. This process has been borderline a joke. We've been...
Borderline what?
A joke. Borderline a joke, I'm sorry. Didn't mean to make it that emphatic. We've been given the information, we've had three meetings, three? And we've been given information. The scenarios we were presented at the last meeting were not of the group's origin. They were provided to us. So if there's any, ever been a time where I felt like a predetermined answer was put in front of me, it was that night. I, I think that, honestly, we need more time. If you look at the presentation about the Piper Jaffrey gentleman put on for us, it says 12 months to figure out what you put on a bond. If we rush into this, we're going to have another bond failure. I just don't think that our community is in a consensus. I think there is still two split ideas. There are those people who will support whatever bond the board decides to go with, and I think there are those people who will only support a bond with a new middle school. And there were those people who will only support a bond without a new middle school. The gist of this issue is our grade configuration. And until the board can take action on that and clarify, right now, our elementary schools are overcrowded, our middle schools are not. It's a boundary issue at the middle schools as our current grade configuration sits. So until a Community Builders Group gets an understanding from the board, what the grade configuration changes might be, we can't give you a consensus recommendation and we're always going to have this issue that divides our community. So, I don't feel like what you've been presented as our recommendation is a recommendation I helped decide. I didn't make any decisions. I was asked, as a straw poll, raise of hand vote, which one, a three-by-one option or a two-by-two option, I supported. I support the three-by-one, because I think there's a greater state match potential. In addition to, with our current grade configuration, our overcrowded schools are our elementary schools, at 130% of capacity. Where our middle schools are at 98%, and you're going to tell me we need a middle school? The numbers don't support that. Now, if we move sixth grade back, the numbers do support that. So I think it's imperative on the board that you guys either move sixth grade back or say, "No, it's going to stay how it is." Because until we resolve that issue, there's always going to be debate on what's the right way to solve the problem. There's no magic bolt that's going to get 100% of our kids housed in 10 years. It's $500 million. We don't have that kind of borrowing capacity. So I think that's a big deal for the board to communicate to any advisory group, what is going to happen with sixth grade. And I don't think it needs to, it should be a strategy. I think there should be a resolution that clearly documents your intention. One of the other things I would ask of the board is how much of the 144 million of current debt capacity are you guys willing to borrow? Is it 100 million? Is it 144 million? Or is it some other number? My understanding of the state rules is that you can add 3/8 of 1% of non-voted debt? Is that correct, Howard? So that, I mean, that's essentially your emergency fund if this roof falls down when we all leave tonight. So...
Did the group ever look at a two-by-one, where they moved the elementary, the sixth graders back to the middle school and only added one elementary school, because that would give us basically three new elementary schools? Was that even an option that would keep down the price?
Honestly, there was no time. I believe we were presented with the information. I felt like we were at a point where we could start having meaningful discussions. To me, this is something that can be broken down in a series of small decisions and that inform the larger strategy. I felt like we had just got enough information to start making small decisions to inform a larger strategy. So I think it's important that the board take definitive action via resolution on grade configuration. I think we need to decide how much of the capacity we're willing to borrow, because I can come up with scenarios that go right up to 144 million. But if, why would we bring that recommendation to you guys if you weren't willing, if that was above your comfort level? I mentioned this earlier to Amy. We need to decide as a strategy in a community, what's more important, small schools or kids in brick-and-mortar classrooms? Because we don't have the financial capabilities to have both. And that's, that is not an easy decision. It'll be tough, because you're trading off two things that you want, but it's got to be made. And then, I think part of, as big as this grade configuration, sixth grade issue, is what is the definition of overcrowding? What's the solution to that? Is that taking kids currently housed in portables and putting them in brick-and-mortar classrooms? Or is that taking schools that are busting at the brick-and-mortar seams but have portable capacity to support the student load and building new schools? I think that there's two distinct solutions if you choose one as the priority strategy. So, I might be the lone voice, but I don't feel like we had any input into a decision. We were polled and that was it. So if you ask me, I would like more time to come with a solid recommendation, when we don't even have a priority of what the project sequence is. We didn't consider any of the safety improvements and any of the other miscellaneous projects that were currently being discussed. And so I don't know how we can say we have a comprehensive bond or a plan for bonding if we haven't considered all of those things. I also think that we don't need to let November slip by. There is an option to run a bond in November that includes the Curie Edition and elementary 16, with the promise that this Community Builders Group is going to continue to work towards a long-term strategy and solution. I think the Community Builders Group should double down on how much meeting time we're doing and start to make small decisions that will inform the larger ones. I hate to be the guy who brings the bad news, but, well, it's in my nature. So, thank you.
I'm going to let these two, and then I'll come back to those that have already spoken.
Okay. I wasn't even planning to talk. I just want to say that I, so, I have four kids in Pasco schools, elementary to middle school. And I came to the first meeting, so my daughter was in the first group that stayed sixth grade at the elementary. I was super happy with it. They were at Maya, she had a great experience, but, so I came to the meeting with that in my head, like, "I'm happy with sixth grade staying in the elementary, let's build more, but let's build more elementaries and keep them there." But, I guess as I saw numbers, which I liked, I like that about this process, is we saw numbers without opinion. So these were just facts, numbers, no history, no like, you know, like, all of us have opinions about the schools, because we know the schools our kids go to, or the schools in our neighborhood, but I'm not super familiar with other schools. So we, I think we have emotion connected to certain schools that we know. But those numbers had no emotion connected. They had no history, they were just data, which I liked. And I could see, okay, well, so even though I think there's some stuff here and there, I can see just by this, these numbers, that some of these other schools fall ahead of mine. I could also see by the numbers that it made absolutely more sense to build another middle school and put our sixth graders back. So even though my experience was great at the elementary with the sixth grade, I think for the big picture, it's better to put it back. And I also, as I've talked around, not every middle school, or not every elementary had a great experience staying at the middle school, or at the elementary. I'm so sorry, I'm confusing that. So the disparity maybe amongst elementary schools has been a little bit different for the sixth graders. But now, as the year's gone on, I can also tell you that the transition into sixth grade, or into seventh grade at the middle school with sports and all the, you know, zero hour, it's been a huge transition to go from sixth grade in an elementary school to seventh grade with zero hour and sports. And I get that those things are optional, she doesn't need to do them, but she wants to, and that's part of the experience, so I'm glad that she's been able to. But I can see why a year there without those options would be a good way to, I've never experienced it, because that's not what, I don't have any older. But, so, I think that my opinion, seeing the numbers and hearing some other people's experiences, my eyes have been opened and my vision broadened. That being said, so I thought we were given a lot of data. And I, I see what he's saying, that if we keep the sixth grade at the elementary, we don't need the middle school. But I think that so many of us feel, and the parents I talk to, other middle school parents, feel like we do need another middle school to get our sixth graders back for experience purposes and to alleviate our elementary schools. Now, my kids go to Maya, which I think is like, got to be at the top number-wise for elementaries, too. And I think they've all done a great job accommodating the numbers. But I've also had a second grader who doesn't eat lunch till like, almost 1:00, because that many kids in a cafeteria takes hours. So they're doing the best they can, but it's still more kids than a building can hold, a cafeteria can, you know, feed. So I guess that's my input, is that this was good for me, it gave me a different perspective than what I had before. And I, I think it actually changed, if someone would have asked me in, you know, February, before we started, what I wanted, I think it's different now than what I would have said then. So for that, I think it's been really valuable. And, so there's, that's my thought.
Could you state your name for us?
Yeah. Megan Williams.
Megan Williams. And did you say you were a teacher also, or parent of four?
No, I never taught in Pasco, I'm a parent, so...
Thank you.
Okay, I'm Andrea Luther. I am a teacher in Pasco. My kids both go to Pasco schools, one of them is served by special ed. I have worked, I'm a substitute, so I've worked at every level in our schools. Right now, I'm over at the IPAL lab, so I'm working with multiple grade levels every day. Sixth grade makes more sense than the middle school. From the perspective of, if I have a sixth grader who is advanced and needs to take geometry, it's not offered at the elementary school, because we don't have those specialists. I have kids that come to IPAL from sixth grade, because they need to take those more advanced classes, so their parents have to transport them to IPAL to take them online. Online learning is not ideal for everyone, and I, I hate to see those gifted, not gifted, but advanced kids having to do learning that isn't the best for them, because they aren't in a building with the teachers that they need. I came into this with no expectations. I didn't have a goal for what I wanted. I wanted to do the most good for as many kids as I could, because I've gotten to serve a lot of kids in our district. I've taught from kindergarten to high school. I love every student that I've met. They're all amazing kids, they all have needs. We need to do what is best for the most of them. If that means moving sixth grade back to the middle school, that's what we need to do. It makes sense, from a progression, progression of subjects to sports to clubs. If I want, my daughter does destination imagination. Destination imagination is K-5 and then 6-8. So when she's a sixth grader in her school, she's going to only have a team of sixth graders, no one older, because 7-8 is at the middle school. There's tons of things like this. I never felt led by the nose on any data. I was given data, I got to make decisions. I went home after every meeting and said, "Husband, let me show you where Pasco is at." You know, he can't do these things, because he's with our kids while I do these things. Two-by-two makes sense. I don't care what order we do it in, I don't think we need to get hung up on that.
Thank you.
No, no, not this.
Okay, I got you, and then I got you, and I got you.
I just wanted to touch on some of Nathan's points. I...
Could you state your name for us?
My name is Ashley Fisher.
Thank you, Ashley.
I'm a parent, and that's it. I felt like everyone's entitled to their opinion, that's great. I agreed that I never felt led by any of the data. I feel like if people felt like they were being led by the data, I think that that might have been a product of the data just making sense, and the data being laid out for them. I don't do this as a job, other people do. I have a job elsewhere, I spend my time doing other things. If you want to talk to me about microscopy, I can tell you everything there is to know about using a microscope. I can't tell you squat about how to plan to build schools. That's why we brought in a company to do that for us, and they gave us the data. Yes, we didn't have enough time. Yes, in a perfect world, we would all spend 20 hours a week going through all of this, and we would be amazing, and we would build the best plan. We don't have that kind of time. I don't think that anyone, I don't, I wasn't, I don't think anyone else was under the assumption that the Community Builders Group was supposed to solve all the problems in four meetings. And so, I feel like it was good for what it did, it was good to give us the information, and I wanted to make sure that I got to echo that point, because I feel like other comments were taking into consideration the assumption that we should have had this, we should have had that. We had the time we did, we got the information we did, we made the decisions that we did. If people didn't feel like that was fair, I feel like the data speaks for itself, and I feel like other people have said that, too. So, I just had to say that.
Thank you. Go ahead.
My name's Heidi Redfield, I am a parent. I've sat on two previous Facility Task Force groups. This Community Builders Group has been extremely rushed in comparison to those previous experiences. We've gotten a ton of information in a very short amount of time. Previous groups, I was just looking, we met 10 times over seven months before we came to the board with recommendations. We didn't really discuss what our last bond was about, didn't talk about any of the others, didn't talk about the bus transportation area, didn't talk about the safety, security vestibules at the elementaries, none of that. And probably that's, that's why it feels like we were said... And probably that's, that's why it feels like we were said, we were told, you have this two by two option, or this one by three. I'm not on board with either, because I don't feel like I've heard, nobody has said, okay, well, we need to re-boundary, and then let's do this two-middle-school deal. It seems, it seems like we need more information. Our bond had 57% yes vote. It didn't have the 48% yes vote that the previous bond that didn't pass had. So the bond needed a little bit more, so, but basically this group has not, it's almost like, whatever was on the previous bond, that's just, we're just gonna sweep that under the rug, um, and move on. Which I guess is fine, but there are some other things that, there were some big deals on that bond that I feel are still needed. If your kid's in the newest elementary schools, you have that security vestibule at the entrance. If your child is in the 11 other schools that don't have it, you still don't have it, and there's no planning at this point for you to get it. Things like that seem very important, and we haven't, we haven't touched that. During the, um, charrette that we were at, um, they were, the questions that were asked were, I thought they were good questions, some questions I felt like I couldn't give the answer I wanted to give, because it wasn't an option. Um, I have, wanna check my notes, gotta make sure I got it all. I feel like why that bond didn't get to that 60% threshold didn't have anything to do really with what was on the bond. We had low voter turnout, I don't know what our deal is in Pasco, we had less people vote in Pasco than voted no in Richland. I can't say, and this is just due to talking to community members, I can't say that the vast majority of people didn't want that bond. Um, yeah, a fourth middle school would be fantastic if we could afford to have it. I would like 10 new elementary schools, four new middle schools, and at least two new high schools. That's what I really want, that's my dream, because we could fill them up. So, I don't know. The group has been, um, I tried really hard to keep an open mind, I've tried hard to make sure that I'm listening to all different opinions. I loved my sixth grader at the elementary level, I can totally see where that's a problem. I was on the Facilities Group that, um, recommended that change to the school board, I know why we did it, because we couldn't get a middle school built. We had to do something, we were at a big squeeze. We did a task force also for multi-track year-round school. You know, looking at that option, that's not a great option either. Um, oh, I was gonna say, the, um, boundary question at the charrettes, everybody was like, yes, let's redo the boundaries, well, everybody wants to redo the boundaries till it comes time to redo them. And then everybody's ticked off, because no, whoa, 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 you're gonna move my kid where? So, boundaries, I know the uproar boundary changes cause, I've seen it, I've watched it, it's not pretty. But, I honestly feel that things like that need to be looked at before we can ask our community to build another middle school. And that's because our elementaries are K6. That's what they are. So I have to go personally, that's what they are, I see that's what they are, I don't see the board saying, okay, in 2022, we are going to go back to a K5, 6'8", 9'12" configuration. I don't see that. So I, I can't look at my crystal ball and see what's gonna happen, so I have to go with what is reality today. That's part of my not being able to get behind either one of these. Now, all that said, I'm going to work my butt off to help pass a bond, any bond. I don't care if it's got the schools I want on it, or the schools someone else wants on it, I don't care. I want schools for our community, because our community needs schools. It needs a lot of schools. And for people to say that they won't support a committee that helps to promote the vote yes, um, campaign because their middle school isn't on it, really irritates me, really irritates me. That's just my personal irritation. But, I think that if you are carrying about 17,000-plus students in Pasco, you support whatever bond rolls in, and you do the best that you can, you hope that you get the school you want, or the school you feel like your children need, but you want what's best for your community. So I will work to pass whatever.
So, I wanted to address a couple things that I'm hearing people say, because I was with this group, and I felt like we did look at-
Can you state your name, Marcia?
Oh, I'm sorry. Marcia Stillwell. I'm a teacher, I have five kids in Pasco schools. I felt like we did consider a lot of options, and yes, it felt quick and rushed, because we are in a hurry, because the longer we wait, the more expensive schools become, and that's another year past that our kids are living in mediocrity. So, yes, it was fast, but I don't think it's as fast as, you know, it wasn't that we only met four times, or three times in four months, because most of us have been involved in watching this process for a very long time, you know? I would say, looking around here, I've seen almost all of you at bond committee meetings, you were all there when we talked right after the bond failed, I mean, people, this group of people has been involved and aware for a long time, so it's not like we just woke up in April and said, oh, let's think of a plan. We've been doing this for a long time, and I feel like we did consider, we did consider all those little things, like the safety add-ons that had been on the original bond, we did talk about that, and we talked about the fact-
Your first meeting, first meeting!
I'll go back and check my notes. But we talked about it.
Hey, let's, oh, hold on, let's just let people-
People wanna attack you for what I said, why, I didn't call anyone-
Nobody attacked you, nobody attacked you.
No, did you see the email this morning?
Then does it, okay.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm right down here. I'm allowed to have it.
You know what, we, we appreciate everybody's point of view, and we don't care if it's dissenting, and if it's with the majority, all of it helps form what we are going to do to help, and the data and everything, so I want you to understand, we appreciate everyone's point of view, and we are listening to all of you. And, and so, so hopefully we can just keep a respectful environment, and, and, because we need it all, we need it all.
I did hear discussion involving the security issues, and part of that discussion was that adding on a security vestibule to an elementary school that has portables makes no sense, that if our kids are outside unprotected in portables, adding an extra layer of security at the front door does not solve our problem. And so, that wasn't a priority. And when we did the community charrettes, the community gave us a list of priorities, and getting out of portables and solving overcrowding was the top priority. And, you know, we've talked a lot about moving sixth grade back, and I think there's a lot of great reasons to go either way, but again, based on the survey data, the community is open to looking at making that change. And I understand, you know, that it's hard maybe to say, well, let's build two, if we don't have your promise that you're gonna move sixth grade back, but I just understand, you can't give us that promise. You can't sit here, and, I mean, there are legalities and processes that you as a board go through, so you can't say, yes, I promise we'll do this, that's not within your power. So, I think we just have to have a little faith that if we give you these schools, that you will fill them the best way possible, that you'll make the best decisions that you can, and that we can't have all the answers upfront, there's just too many moving parts, too many unknowns. I'm also concerned about people talking about, uh, matching funds and things of that nature, and I know at the very beginning in the presentation, I can't remember which, who it was that was presenting then, you know, and they talked about the percentage of matching funds, you know, if we run this bond, we get this percent, or that bond, we get this percent. Well, the amount of matching is still the same, it's just if we run a bigger bond, that amount of matching is less of a percent of the bigger portion. But at the end of the day, if we need these schools, and we need to spend this money, it doesn't matter. We can't cut back and build less schools, and wait and hope that we're gonna get the matching funds later, that the legislature is gonna somehow change its mind in our favor. They're changing their mind against our favor, and so, we need to build what we need to build, and we just need to do it. And, um, sorry, I had a list. Oh, so, I've heard a lot of talk that people are angry that some people wanted the second middle school and didn't get it, and I can tell you, I'd have to go back and watch the film from that meeting, but the meeting we had right after the bond failed, and many people stood up and said, I really wish there was a second middle school on it, and, but I still voted for it anyway. And I only heard one person say, I wouldn't vote for a bond with a second middle school. So I don't think that there are naysayers who are insisting on a second middle school or death. The only naysayers I'm hearing are the ones who are saying, I don't want a second middle school, and I won't vote for that. So, to accuse people of insisting that they get a second middle school when, when that is not the case, this group here, the people who are asking for a second middle school have said repeatedly that they will vote for it no matter what. And, I feel like, we've had several really positive comments, people excited that, let's get this done, let's do hard things, let's go big, or not at all. And then there's been some naysayers who say, well, what if people don't vote for it? What if it, well, yeah, what if they don't? Well, guess what, that already happened. So, it, you know, it's, if it happens, it happens, but we can't base our decisions out of fear. We can't keep saying, well, what if they don't vote? We ran a smaller bond and it failed, so we're gonna run a bigger bond, maybe that fails too, maybe it passes, we don't know. But we gotta do what we think is best, and, you know, we've spoken about presenting a united front. When we leave here, we need to say, this is the bond, this is what we want to do, and everybody, you know, everybody needs to be on that bond committee, and out there on the street corner with their signs and doing this. But, we need to all have a positive attitude, and I feel like the board in the past has had a really discouraged attitude, that, yeah, we have this bond, but what if nobody votes for it? We need you to be out in the community saying, yeah, we've got a bond for you, and it's gonna be amazing, because I feel like leadership has a negative energy, and that's filtering down, and so, we'll rally and rah rah as much as we can, but we need everybody to be excited and not sitting here poo-pooing the whole process, and, you know, we can't afford to go back to square one and take another two years to revamp this process, our kids cannot wait that long.
Other comments, other people wanna talk?
Oscar.
I just want to apologize for losing my cool. I just had an enlightened moment, and I believe that what some people viewed as discussion, others viewed as decisions. See, now, I can, I can recall that we discussed security vestibules, and we discussed those things, but I can't recall that we made a decision to not consider them in a scenario. So I, I, I think that's where some of the disconnect i- is happening. I really do want to do what's best for the majority of kids in the district, and that's where my passion and motivation comes from. I apologize for losing my cool, but I also, that moment allowed me to have some clarity and, and enlighten, that when we were having what I thought were discussions, everyone else may have decided that was a decision. But I, I think there's very clearly a distinction between a discussion and a decision, the board makes discussions, and then someone tables a motion, and then a decision is made. We, we did not do any, what I would call, decision-making. We did a lot of discussing, and we got a lot of data, and we kicked a lot of ideas around, but I don't think, I don't feel like we made a lot of decisions.
And I, I do want to express this on, as a personal viewpoint, um, because I don't know how my fellow board members feel, but that $12 million, there were some really important things in that $12 million, and from what I understand, it wasn't, that wasn't tabled. Um, there are things that really do, I mean, we need some roofs, and we need some things, you know, some new, those things are going to have to happen. I am, I am concerned about this 104 million, I personally would kind, if we're gonna move the sixth grade back, and I know you don't want to, I don't want to, it sounds like a lot of parents are kinda where we are at, where, and I even told this to Joe in one of our personal meetings, you know, I don't want the sixth grade back, but if that's what the community wants, that's what's best for the community, I will vote for moving the sixth grade back to middle school, because I, like you, want to do what's best for the community, even if it's not what I prefer for my own children. Because, if you want to know the truth, one of my daughters did better at sixth grade in middle school, and the others have done better at the junior high, at the elementary school level. So that will change, but I, as a board member, cannot get rid of that 12 million, and a lot of that stuff is really reviewed. We do need some bus changes, our, our bus garage, even retaining bus drivers is becoming more and more difficult, because we have inadequate facilities. There are things that are going to have to happen, and so I'm trying to fit my head around this 104 million, and maybe a way of doing that isn't doing a two by two, it's doing a two by one, because if we do move the middle school back, all of a sudden, we have about three elementary schools worth of more room. So I, I for one would like, kinda like more of that information, unless you trust us as a board on the shortened timeline to make that decision, and, and look at three models rather than just two.
I just want to say real briefly, because I know we're losing some people, I want to thank everyone that came, and I really appreciate all the viewpoints, and it helps, uh, helps gain more insight, and kind of expands my vision, like Ms. Williams said, kind of broadens my vision, and I think there's sometimes a misunderstanding of the purpose of this, that this group was not, their goal was not to like, present a bond, that we would say, okay, yeah, that's a good idea, we'll run that bond, the board has to decide what's on the bond. The purpose of the, the Community Builders Group was to analyze some data, have discussion, look at the facilities, kinda come up with a plan, with a plan, but everything that's happened prior to this is also part of the decision-making process, so this isn't a four-month process. For the last, at least, I think, year and a half, almost the entirety of the time I've been on the board, we've been in discussion on potential bond proposals, we've looked at the work of the task force, we've had forums at schools, and we've talked to community members, I mean, we're talking, going on a, a year and a half at least, and all the things that we learned from the last bond, all of that comes into our play in our decision going forward, so this was just a small piece. I think the process is gonna continue to be refined and continued, it's not like it's a done process. My, my personal feels, I, I wish it was more aggressive even, because I think the biggest issue from a big picture in Pasco is that we've just been way, uh, we have not been aggressive enough for the last 10 or 15 years, there's always a hope that our growth will slow down, and we just never get there, so we're just continually behind. So I, I like a more aggressive approach, as has been mentioned, we're just gonna keep having an issue unless we eventually do something a little more aggressive than a couple schools on a bond, so, um, I, I'm confident our community will support what we put forth this time, due to all the work that's been done, and I look forward to more discussion with the board and community, and, and ultimately, we'll make a decision of what, and, and I agree with Ms. Phillips, the, the security things, transport, all that, none of that has been eliminated, we will decide when we, when the board decides on a bond proposal, what ultimately will be on it.
Other board members' reaction tonight, Scott?
I, I just appreciate all of the hard work that you have put forth, and, uh, going to the meetings and, and helping, um, helping us with information, and, and I just appreciate what you've done. I, I know it's, I, I've been on the committees in the past, and I know it's a lot of work, and I, I really appreciate all that you've done. Thank you.
Steve?
I've got lots to say, but I don't think we have time to hear it all. Uh, first of all, thank you. This is, this is not an easy process, it's a, it's a big process, and I think it's very important. These, our facilities is gonna impact our community, not just our school district, but our community for years to come, so, I'm not necessarily in a hurry to get this process done, I'd rather take some time and get it right. I, I understand there's no perfect scenario, but I do believe it's worth taking the time to get it right. I, I am like Nathan, I don't have, I, I don't see a lot of numbers and information here, and I'm a numbers guy, and to me, that's how I make decisions, so I, I look at this, I mean, I know we've got, we've got a 20-year layout up there, it says things at different points along the line, but I, to me, the information I want to know is, okay, after we build these four middle schools, or two more middle schools, how many students are gonna be in each school? schools, how many students are gonna be in each school? Because I come up with numbers that are bigger than we have now, and I don't think that was the purpose in moving to the middle school. I'll show ya. If you wanna stay, I'll go through those numbers. I'll, there's a blackboard up there and a pen, I've been observing that, and I'll go through those numbers gladly, for anybody who wants to take the time. The other thing, how much, when are we gonna run the next bond? How big is it gonna be? What are we gonna get for that bond? What is that gonna do to capacity in our schools? That information is not here. We've got a timeline that says, run these at this point, but how much? How will it impact boundaries if we redo these middle schools? Are we just throwing that out there, saying, this is a nice thing to do? Will those middle schools go to a high school? Which high school? I mean, these things are all things that feed into this decision, that to me are big deals. And, and, I mean, it's nice to just say, let's go build two middle schools, let's do this two-by-two plan, but to me, there's just not enough information to make a, a good decision. So that's, that concerns me. Just, I've got a bunch of random notes here, and I'll try not to go through them all, but I think what, part of the challenge that we've had in our district, and I, I don't mean to accuse anybody, but I think what we've done is we've been putting out fires. Every time we run a bond, it's, okay, what do we need now? And that's what we do, and that's what we put on the bond. It's worked sometimes, and it hasn't worked other times. And that's why we've asked to put this long-term plan together, so that people know. I, I think that was part of the challenge. There's people that want a new middle school. I get it. Our middle schools, especially McLaughlin, is crowded. But when you look out there and you say, okay, this is what they proposed this time, and there's no middle school on it, and I don't know when we're gonna another, gonna get another middle school, people aren't supportive of those kinds of things. So if we have a plan that says, okay, we're gonna run this, this time, middle schools at this point approximately, it's gonna cost this much, this will be what we anticipate our growth will be, this is how many students will be in these schools, we'll run our high school at this time, I mean, to me, those things are things that people can see, or at least I can see, and say, look, that's what we, that works. I don't get what I want now, but I see when it's coming, and that's, I can support that. To me, those things are critical. So with that, again, just thank you for your work. This is not easy. It has been fast, and the reason it's been fast is because we, we want to get something for our schools as quickly as we can. We've got things in line, as Mr. Marsh has pointed out. We've got this elementary school in line. Who knows what'll happen with the match money? But I, I'll tell you, I've got more questions, I think, tonight than I had before, and I think it, again, Nathan's probably a, a technical guy, I think he's a analytical guy, that's what he does for a living, and so he's got lots of questions, and I've, I'm the same way. So, but thank you for your work, and we'll look forward to more decisions coming in the future.
I wanna thank everybody for coming tonight, but also for those of you who took part in the process and came to the, the charrettes, or the community meetings where, where the clickers were used, those of you that came to all four community builders' meetings. You guys, you guys get to see the sausage being made, I guess, and see the difficulty that the board has in coming to, not, not a consensus, but a majority even. And we've learned a lot from what you guys have said, we've learned a lot from the task force in the past. I, I can see both sides of it, go big, go big or go home if we fail. I, I think we just, like many of you said, we just need schools. So I, not looking backwards, I still think we ran the right bond last time, looking out for financial considerations and getting, just building schools. But I can also see a two-by-two would, would make sense if we get to build those schools and, and move the sixth grade back up, reduce crowding at the elementary school level. I am, I assume that everyone took into account, we failed by three points, and, and the consent, not the consensus, but the majority of, of the group that participated believes that by adding another middle school, we're going to get those extra voters. Because we had a couple options. We could go back out with what we already had, or we could've made a bond that was of a lesser dollar value, or a bond that's of greater value, and it sounds like you guys are recommending to us the, the bigger bond. And I think we just, we need to pass something. So it'll be a good discussion coming forth here from the board in the near future, and like Ms. Phillips said, and a couple other board members up here, I, I do believe that safety and security and bus barns and all that was important stuff. So I, I heard several different things about how the conversations or decision went with that. We, as a board, will discuss that also, but we know that it's important to put into all of our new schools. I believe it's also important, you know, from an equity standpoint, to put those into our old schools, but as a board, we'll each discuss that when we talk about bond options. So thank you, and thank you to Mr. Carlson and, and Mr. Marsh, and also to Joe for coming in and helping lead this conversation tonight.
My name's Kim. I served on the bond committee, volunteer in the community, and parent of four children that will be going through the Pasco School District. Looking at the historical bond elections, typically, if a bond fails, they don't run another bond that's higher amount. So that's something maybe we need to think about, is a third option, because at this point, it's a two-by-two, that's more, greater than what we asked the voters in February, or a three-by-one, that is greater than the amount that we asked back in February. If you see, if we do the same exact thing, if we go back to November of 94 and September of 94, that bond failed twice the same. So maybe we run a smaller bond with that really great communication of what our 10-year plan is, so voters can see what's gonna be coming down the pipe for in the future of additional schools. I agree, we cannot, I think it would be absolutely criminal if we end up not addressing the security issues for our students. Ms. Phillips, I really, really agree with that. And the fact that some schools have that, that's awesome. Schools that don't have that, we just can't, as a community, as adults that are in charge of caretaking for all of our students, we, we can't not address those issues. So personally, working on this community builders, I felt like, yes, it was definitely rushed, three meetings, a lot of data, discussion, but not decisions. And I really thought decisions were gonna be coming from the community of community builders, so I was, I was a little taken back by that, and then kinda getting pushed towards a two-by-two or three-by-one. So I, in conclusion, please let's open up to other options. Let's look at historical data, and let's try to pass a bond, get those buildings built for our students, and have a clear picture for voters. Thank you.
Well, again, I express my thanks for all of your participation tonight, and being honest and open with the communication. The board has some decisions to make, obviously. I think also the board needs to give us some direction, us, this group and myself, excuse me, on what you do need. Steve mentioned a number of things that he'd like to see, what, what is the data that you need to, I guess, draw to a close, whether we continue to reward November, whether we pump the brakes on that, move it to a later time. We'll be looking forward to that information. As soon as I have that from you, we'll certainly share that with them, and if we need to schedule more meetings with this group to get a more well-developed decision, we can do that. Okay?
Well, and can we, because there was some discussion here. It seems like we do need our numbers. I agree 100% with Steve. We, I would love to see those three bond options and prices, and we definitely want to include some of those things that we've already deemed, as a board, were very important with that $12 million. I would love to have another community builder, builders over those, those issues with those things. I don't know where the rest of the, the board sits, but it seems like that's what we've asked for this evening.
I, I thought of one more question, Joe. I know you went out in the community and met with lots of community leaders, and I'd be interested, you don't have to answer it here, maybe it's not a quick answer, what, what the majority of the community leaders thought about running a bigger bond, or if you guys discussed that, if the community would support a $99 million bond, what, what the words were that were spoken and discussed?
Yeah, I, the conversations I had with people, there, there was no issue about- I don't think you're on, Joe. Okay, I'm sorry. The conversations that I had with community leaders, I did not get the sense that they were nervous about the amount. I think what was their ask of us, if you will, their goal is to, as some have said tonight, to be very clear about what that was for. Now, what was the intention, and what was the long-range plan? As you all recall, we came to build a 10-year plan, and then kinda paused on that to get this mill going, to see where we could be in terms of a bond. That 10-year plan is still on the table. We could certainly flesh that out, get a lot of the data that Steve's asking for, and then come back and look at what that means in terms of a bond. If November is what we need to do, then we're gonna have to accelerate some of your asks. We're gonna have to get in, get that data, get that information, and get it to you as quickly as possible, because as Trevor pointed out, the, the window closes August 1, and, and we, we don't wanna miss that window, and we don't want anybody to be indecisive about their decision, because we didn't get the right information to you. So our expectation, would you, you would funnel that back to us through Superintendent Whitney, or Randy, or whatever the course you decide, so that we could prepare that documentation and help facilitate that decision. And if that's another community builder meeting, or two more community builder meetings, let us know that, because I think these folks would, would come back out, even though there's some disagreement. The, the reality is, the disagreement is good. It gets us better information about what people want, and if there's passion in that disagreement, that's good too. So I, I don't want anybody to leave thinking that, oh my goodness, we don't have agreement with the, I, I didn't come here with the intention that we did have agreement. I came here to present to you different options, and to let community builder folks talk to you about what those options meant to them. And I think we accomplished that. So I'm gonna just step back. It's eight o'clock, let's go home, have a nice evening, and you let us know what you would like us to do next.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe. Joe, see you.
Thank you.